The Community Development Corporation of Los Fresnos, today is February 3rd, 2025. First item, call the meeting to order, which has happened, under item B, invocation and pledge. Mr. Mylum?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for our board, our Economic Development Board that volunteers their time and takes so much effort and the continued good of Los Fresnos and all that they do. Thank you for their work. Thank you for those here tonight, our Chamber and the Little League and all the work that they do and volunteer and time. And we just thank you for so many people that lend a helping hand to Los Fresnos to make it what it is and make it the good community it is. Continue to bless us all, and we ask this in Jesus' name, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item C, visitors' remark. Anybody showing it? No. Okay. Moving on to item D, under action items. D1, consideration and action to approve a sign grant for Real Storage located at 696 East Ocean Boulevard.
Mr. President, we met business incentive committee in reference to this request on the sign grant. Two bids were submitted, and it's for, I believe, the storage located right down the road here at 696 East Ocean Boulevard. Lowest bid was for $9,300 from Sign Solutions. CDC's portion would be, on the sign grant, $3,750. Committee met, voted, and approved that amount.
I'll motion to approve the sign grant for the real storage located on 696 East Ocean Boulevard for the amount of $3,750.
I'll go second in that motion.
There's a motion and a second. We approve a sign grant for Swain Real and Real Storage on Ocean Boulevard in the amount of $9,300, and our share would be $3,750. Any questions, comments, discussion? That being the case, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it, it's unanimous. My button does not working very well. But moving on to action item D2, presentation by the Los Fresnos Little League and possible action to approve funding for the 2025 Little League session, season, I'm sorry. The speakers will come up there, make sure the button is red, because people on YouTube want to hear you, and so do we.
Let's see, is that a little bit better? Is that okay? Okay. Well, I'd like to thank you guys, number one, for the opportunity and for the time to allowing us to come up here and present ourselves. And I'd also like to thank you for the work that you guys have done to help improve our community, and specifically as it pertained to the youth athletics that we've got. So, you know, I'm sure you all are well aware, the Los Fresnos School District has well over 11,000 kids that are in our community. And with the development of the Woods of Los Fresnos and the completion of the Madero subdivision, you know, we're looking at increasing that number substantially. And we think it's really important that the Little League is able to maintain its foundation here in the community, you know, as a pillar of development for youth sports and for our youth in general. We've run a really good operation here over the last several years, increasing our numbers dramatically from a couple of hundred that trickled in periodically to well over 400. And if I'm not mistaken, our last number was about 472 participants in our Little League. So, for perspective, we did the same amount of Little League participants as the West Browns of Little League comparatively, proportionately. So, we're really proud of what we've been able to do. As far as our level of competition, we've maintained our integrity and kept it to where we operate this as a recreational league for kids of every skill level. In the years prior, whole teams could come in and they would do some not-so-nice things to some of our kids that are a little less experienced. So, we've taken a strong stance on equity and integrity and making sure that we operate that way. And we've also done a lot with the contributions that we receive from the CDC. So, in the last year, some of the highlights that we had, we went from 407 players in 2023 to 474. We've actually hosted an All-Star tournament here in our city, which brought in people from Laredo, from San Antonio, from Corpus to play baseball here at our park. So, I've been playing baseball in this park since I was six years old. I'm 38, well, 37 and like 360 days old right now. I'll be 38, and I've been part of this league since I was six years old. I've been helping for the last 14 years in an unofficial capacity, and in the last three, I've taken on a role as a board member, which I'm really proud of. We were able to secure $17,000 in funding from sponsorship, from businesses from around our community that are willing to contribute and pay it forward. We've also recently, in the last two years, partnered with the Los Fresnos School District to host a softball tournament specifically for our elementary-age girls. So, we actually saw a really great turnout this last season from the previous tournament in terms of our enrollment. We actually want to bring our girls back. So, many, many years ago, we lost our girls to Pony because of a disagreement between the Little League Board and the coaches for softball, and I was part of that. And they told us, if you don't like it, go play Pony. And so, they did, and we've had a hard time getting them back, but we're doing really well with that. We've completed our soft toss station, our batting cages are near completion, we've already got the foundation and the pillar set for that, we're just waiting to put the poles and the netting up. And moving forward, what we're looking to do is complete the batting cages by March 2025. We're looking to increase our softball participation and outreach. We're looking to attract more sponsors to our higher-end sponsorship by making some adjustments to what's available through that sponsorship. And we're also improving coaching and volunteering activities through collaboration with the Los Fresnos High School Coach Morales and Coach Molina have been instrumental in helping us develop youth coaches. And we're also looking at collaborating with the city to build a new concession stand. That's been a real big one for us. And I think the last estimation that we were given, and I'm still new to this portion of it, because I was on the outside of this one, was about $60,000, what it was looking to complete. And we anticipate being able to use all the funding that we make through that concession stand and put back into our Little League. And in the spreadsheet that we're looking at, and we have, we actually now have an accountant as part of our board member as a treasurer. So, we're actually now able to track everything down to the penny. We're looking at concession stand sales from January to December 24th at $28,891.25. So, our concession stands drew really well, and that's a total number coming from league, regular league season, All-Stars, and then any other events that we host. So, we're really proud of that. And our biggest expenditures are coming from umpire fees, which totaled out at about $5,660. Registration fees, which is our charter and the insurance that we have to pay for individual athletes, which is $6,660.12. Equipment came in at $16,417.21. And then our uniforms are at $37,473.24. So, we have a pretty substantial operating budget for a small, little baseball, kind of like the rodeo says, the biggest little rodeo in Texas. Well, we like to consider ourselves one of the strongest Little Leagues in South Texas and in District 24 play. And it's not just anything that I'm doing, it takes a collaboration of all of our team members. Like I said, my name's Hector Martinez, I'm the newly-appointed league president. Tim right here is Dave Gillespie, he's our secretary, and he's been doing an amazing job in putting all this together. Mr. Dan Avila, I don't know if you've heard of him or not, he sells some barbecue here in the city that's second to none, according to him. I'm waiting on my sample, but he is our coaching coordinator, so he works with all our coaches and making sure that they have everything that they need to be successful. Some of the members that weren't able to be here with us today are Mr. Heath Brewer, he's our players' agent, so he's actually responsible for verification of birth dates and social security numbers, living, or not, sorry, not social security numbers, that's my other work. Birthdays, league boundaries, to make sure that they live within our district and are able to play. And Ms. Roxanne Mills, she's actually our vice president. So, she basically cleans up all my messes. And so, we've all been coaching a really long time, we're very passionate about what we do, we enjoy what we do. I've, you know, said, I've been doing it for 14 years, I have a 21-year-old daughter, and I have a five-year-old little girl that, so I anticipate being here for a few more years if they still want to play. And we're, again, always happy for the opportunity to showcase the things that we've done, and we're always, always making sure that we're giving credit where credit's due, because a lot of what we were able to accomplish in the last couple of years was from the help, through help from the CDC. So, we're really happy about that.
Mr. Mylum, reading your notes here, it says during budget time, the CDC approved to set aside $7,500 for the coming season, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And then up to an additional $60,000 for the concession stand. Yes, and I don't know if you all got the plans. I had worked with Mr. Kiderman and a architect slash engineer on that, and he was going to move it towards bidding, but I don't know where that is, so.
I would like to hear, at the very least, a verbal description, you know? Are we talking about a 10-foot building, 20-foot tall, 10 feet wide, you know? The one we used to have, and I'm old, the one that used to be there a long time ago was like a two-story building with the announcers on top and a concession stand downstairs. Is that basically what we're looking at?
No, nothing like that, because it's going to be off from the field, because then the way that one was, you couldn't get spectators to be able to see and to be able to sit really where they want to sit behind home plate. So, that concession stand will sit off, but it's a, I don't remember exact size, I didn't bring the plans, but it's a pretty good size.
Yes, sir. So, the actual description or the geographic location, and I have the plans in my truck, but my truck is a work truck, so they're a little folded and kind of dirty because I work.
You're doing a good job of explaining, keep going.
Yeah, so geographically situated, if you're looking at the field that's right next to the basketball courts, there's the bleachers, there's a sidewalk, and there's a splash pad. They would be west of the splash pad, in between the two sidewalks where they make a corner, with the main entrance facing north and two other windows on the west and the east side of the building. The measurements, if I remember correctly, it was a 12-by-24 building that was going to be made of cinder block with the complete foundation, plumbing, air conditioning, and desks, well, not desks, countertops, rather, that come off of what would be the north and south wall, that are, they were 30-inch countertops that fold down, so it could be used as a dual purpose, so we could have our board meetings inside of the concession stand.
Just to make sure I have it in my mind correctly, you're talking about between, let me see, the ocean side, the ocean side sidewalk behind the bleachers, the dugout, there's a sidewalk there, between that and the basketball court, correct?
That's correct.
So, each end of the building, one would point west and the other one would point east, correct?
The short sides, yeah.
Yeah, okay, the shorter part. Okay, well, that's good, and that's, you know, I mean, how many ways can you describe a cinder block building that's rectangular?
But it's designed attractive so that it kind of fits in with what's there.
Yeah, and I like the notion that it doesn't compete with spectators, you know, we're able to, at some other time or some other year, maybe, improve those bleachers to where we have some sort of stadium seating with roof, because that's going to be our number You need to come up to the podium and push the button.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to highlight the motion that he mentioned, that it was going to be instrumental for us to use it as well as a meeting facility, because right now, sometimes it's difficult, we're having to ask different entities where we can meet, and if we want to continue building this, you know, these meetings are going to be key, so it'll have a dual role in that as well. So, not only will it bring extra revenue, but it'll also help us for meeting space.
Hello, Dave Gillespie again. Just to add, or wait for him to clean up those plans, if you look at where the concession stand is right now, it's near the softball field, which is not our main field, right? So, in order for most of the people to go and get concessions, they've got to walk all the way to the other end of the park to go and get concessions. So, having it right there on the main field will have more people, that'll also increase our concessions sales, no doubt, having it conveniently right there as well.
On that one that you have right now?
Yeah.
There along the street, is that going to remain there, or is that going to go tear down?
I don't think, yeah, we haven't discussed plans, but I think we'd remain it. So, we've got, for our equipment, right, we've got the shed that's on the north side, right? And quite frankly, we have to put equipment, things for the field, and it's super crowded, right? And so, we could use all that space for sure, or just for storage for the concessions, yeah.
They're showing us an artist's rendition or an architect's rendition of the building, and while he's doing that, I have some comments, and this is our comment section. I put pencil to the paper, or otherwise stated, pen to the paper. The $7,500 is just, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the big-ticket item, $60,000. You take $60,000 divided by 500 children, and that's $120 per child, but this building is not for one year, this building is going to be 10, maybe 20 years. And if it's for 10 years, it winds up be costing $6,000 a year, and you divide that by the, you divide that by the 500 kids that we got, it winds up costing us $12 per child. So, the math in it is, yes, it's a big investment, but it's not a repetitive yearly investment. So, my opinion is, I like the $60,000 figure, and hopefully, that'll do a turnkey where you don't have to come back or, you know, not have a barn door on it or the doors that you're looking for. So, those are my thoughts on it.
And if I can, I'm not sure if I can add to that, but if you look at, we hosted All-Star games this year, with, you know, with the current concession stand we have, this adding another nice two-building story for concessions is going to make us even more attractive to bring in more All-Star games and more hosting there, which then can generate more revenue and more recognition for our city.
Any further question, comments, discussion?
I guess the only question I have on the $60,000, we're going to add the additional $75,000, so it'd be $67,500?
Correct. Those are my thoughts, anyway. The $7,500 is the yearly donation to the Little League, and the $60,000 is for the concession project, which hopefully will cover all of it.
Do we have to do two separate motions, Mr. Mylum?
For what?
For the, one for the $7,500 and then the other one for the $60,000 for the concession?
No, not the concession right now, because you set it aside in the budget, and then as we move forward and however they get bids, well, then we'll see if that covers it or We have no idea. I know Mr. Kiderman was hoping to get some people to do less, less costly, cheaper, and don't know if that'll still happen, but hopefully, we can get, whether it's electrical contractor and the different contractors do it, or one general that gets it all done. Not sure how they'll approach that, but Little League will handle that.
And in our experience, it's been, that's usually the case, is because the Little League is going to be actually the ones that are going to be paying for the construction, is in our experience, people are generally willing to help us. For example, with the footings for the batting cage, I think one of the bids that we got was a little over $3,600. We had another contractor come in, and he says, I'm just going to charge you for the concrete. He goes, I'll take care of everything else. So, we wound up only paying $1,200 for it. So, generally, when it's for something like this, our experience has been that people are willing to help out, so.
Okay, going back to your question, in the agenda, we have to follow the agenda, and the agenda is one item. So, we can do one motion and cover both of them, because it is one item on, it's item D2. So, it's not broken down into sections. Mr. Mylum's notes are in two sections, but we have to follow the agenda.
But it doesn't say, it just says you're approving funding, it doesn't say what funding, so you can approve the $7,500 funding, because we don't know, we don't know the other amount yet.
Okay, but we can approve a tentative amount, correct? The $60,000?
You've already done that, you've set it aside in the budget, so you've already approved that with your budget, so there's no reason to approve that again.
Okay, I'm with you now, so that was already set aside?
Both of them were already set aside.
Okay.
Pending them coming to you, and, you know, they might have said that they only want $6,000, and so, that's why it says up to, but I'm sure that they're not saying that. Does that make sense? Okay.
I'm with you, Mr. Mylum.
Okay, so, we're moving on. Right now, we have an action item in front of us, it does specify, specify to discuss the approval of funding for a 2025 Little League season. So, the recommendation is $7,500, $7,500 even, and I was going to make a suggestion, I'd say we just round it up, make it an even $10,000. So, my motion would be to round it up to even $10,000 to help the Little League, and then, do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that motion as stated by Mr. Dan.
Okay, we have a motion to fund the Los Fresnos Little League in the amount of $10,000 for the 2025 season, and of course, the project for the concession stand is in the works. Is that correct? Any questions, comments, discussion? That being the case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, it's unanimous, $10,000 to the Los Fresnos Little League.
Thank you guys so very much. Honestly, from the bottom of our hearts, as, not just as the board members for the Little League, but all of us have kids that play in this league, and I know Mr. Olivares, years ago, seen him out there putting in the same kind of work in his parks and taking care of his kids, and it's, you know, we don't get anything out of it, but the legacy that we leave behind, I think, is really important, so I'd really like to thank all of you for helping us out, and. Turn this off, but, so, we always set aside stuff for you guys, so, I'm going to have, so this is a.
You need to push the button.
Turn it back on?
Okay, well.
So, this is no avila, he's one of our baseball players, he was actually on our 12U All-Star team last year, so he set aside something, and he wanted to go out and deliver it to you guys, so if he can, he'd come up there and hand you guys some. So, just hang on to a signature, because it's going to be worth a lot of money one day.
Well, thank you very much, and my parting comment on your presentation is, all you have to do is see the smile on the kid's face, and it's worth every penny. Thank you, gentlemen, for all the work you do, all the hours you put in, all the time away from your family, and you are rewarded by memories that these kids will have until they're old like me. I still remember my Little League coach. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D3, consideration and action to approve the minutes of the January 6, 2025 meeting.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes of the January 6, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. We approve the minutes of the January 6, 2025 meeting. All in favor, I'm sorry, any questions, comments, discussions? That being the case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, it's unanimous. Moving on to item four, my understanding that the report is almost terminated, almost done, so we're going to pass this, is that correct, Mr. Mylum, for our next meeting? And I guess, I don't know how long I've been here, 20 years or something like that, this never happened before, so it's a rarity, but it's something that I'm sure will be cleared up next month. Moving on to item D5, consideration and action to elect a president and vice president for a one-year term.
Do we have to nominate both at one time, or can we just do one at a time?
However you want.
All right. Well, I'd like to say first, I'd like to nominate Enrique Juarez to be, continue to serve as our president. He's done a fantastic year in the 11 years that I've known him on this board, so that's my recommendation.
Thank you, I accept the nomination.
And I'll go ahead and nominate for vice president, Mr. Dan Alves, same thing, has always stepped up when Mr. Juarez is not here, so done a good job as well. I guess I'll make the motion. Go ahead and.
And on the rare occasion that I'm not here. Very rare. Okay, I guess we have an election now, Mr. Mylum?
Yes.
You guys, okay.
Since they're making a motion and a.
There's a motion and a second, and both candidates are unopposed? Are there any contrary votes, any votes against either candidate? Okay, then in that case, raise your hand and say aye to show your vote for the two candidates?
Aye.
Okay. So, election's final, thank you very much for your vote of confidence, it makes me happy to be here. I'm very proud of what we do, all of us, not just one of us, but all of us, and we're into the community, and we care, and that's our number-one thing. Mr. Olivares?
Thank you, appreciate your support. We'll continue to work hard as a team and as president and vice president for you guys and our community.
Thank you all very much. Moving on to item E1, the CDC consultant report, January 2025, under A, business and resident site information, B, business outreach, and C, sponsored promotions. Mr. Martinez?
Good evening. As you can see, the report, summary, detailed items that the offices have taken during the past month, but the important, big thing is we have a business drive going on. I passed out the business brochures with a summary of the items that we're going to be sending to these packages, to the banks, and financial management companies, and the RGV, and others this month. And then I will be visiting them from time to time during the spring as well to follow up on this. It is important that we take this initiative with people, that just not think that people know we're here. Our mission is make sure they have information about us, that we are here, and I take it granted that they will come. We will market and continue to market throughout the spring and knocking on doors. Few of the companies that I visited this month was, one, a furniture store out of Farlingen, and a equipment rentals company. The equipment rentals company, I've known it for many years, he said they were looking at moving into Star County. I said, take a look at us, and I'll send you a package. So, those are the things we need to mobilize, is business, it's, I think it's the tone we're going to take, and it's the right time, January 2025. So, if you have any questions on the campaign that we're initiating, give me a call or any recommendation. initiating, give me a call or any recommendations. You have a draft copy, Mr. Mylum will finish tomorrow to to review all. But most of the documents, we've already been over. And we will be sending these out in the next twenty-four hours. So if you have any recommendations, any comments, et cetera, it's about giving the information about the economy, the opportunities, and the sites available, commercial sites in Los Fresnos, particularly our downtown and our major crossroads that we have in in the city. So look forward to knocking on doors. That's my report, Mr. German and for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Any questions for Mr. Martinez?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. And see you at the rodeo.
Yes, sir. Moving on to item F one, a report by general manager under one, I'm sorry, city manager report, A, Veterans Memorial, Mr. Mylum?
Finally get to report that I think that we're close. We met today with the audio people on how to get audio files downloaded so that when you push the button, we can have something to play. He already has downloaded for each one their, what do you call it, dedicated song that that for each branch of the military. We're working on a kind of a summary of each branch that will be speaking. So we'll upload that as well. The lighting is pretty well done. They have some adjustments they need to make in the next two or three days. They show up after dark to do that, because it looks, it looks really good at night with the lights on. They have a few items to touch up on. The the audio part will be installed on Wednesday and Thursday. We're hoping to do a, what I call a final walkthrough with, to see what little things need to be done, so that we can officially say it's it's done, except these things. We will not have the the landscaping part done for another thirty days. Well, we won't start it until March, beginning of March to mid-March because of the weather. Not a good time to plant plants and grass. So our goal is to have it by this weekend to where it's ready to go. Hopefully, people with a rodeo can see it and come visit this weekend, even though it's not officially all all done, but it's been done enough to where people can enjoy it over the weekend. So that's what the plans are and the goal is. So getting closer to that time.
Thank you, Mr. Mylum. Moving on to item G.